I'd like to bring the order, the Palatine County Board of Supervisors workshop meeting for February twenty second, two thousand twenty four. What can you do to pledge allegiance and Mr. Powers, can you do the prayer?
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands alone nation under God indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for your blessings. For our presence here in Palatine County, we ask you to bless this meeting, our families, our nation. Give us wisdom and discernment as we discuss the topics on the agenda, Lord, pray and ask us these things and praise him. Request to postpone agenda items and additions, releases or changes in the order of presentation. County Administrator update.
Okay, just one briefly this Saturday is the Palatine Lions Club Chili Cook Off. That is twelve before tickets are available and I'll be one of the judges of the chili. Looking forward to that if you can come out. That's it.
All right.
Best of luck.
Best of luck. How much do you have to eat before you judge?
We had an employee chili cook off and I didn't even make top three, so I don't know why they can die.
All right, that brings us to our first public comment period. Anyone signed up? No one wants to speak and we'll close public comment period and it brings us to new business. Strategic plan.
So kicking off update to the strategic plan, so just have a go through a very brief couple minute PowerPoint, just kind of on strategic planning one oh one. Then it will take ten or fifteen minutes to run through some of the measurables where we left off our twenty twenty, twenty twenty one strategic plan. And then we have a working draft updated twenty twenty four strategic plan that will go through review and just start generating some some comment. So briefly, first, you know, why why should an organization such as our plan kind of sets the vision for what we want to see in the future? You know, what we want to stay the same, what we want to see change and where we want to go sets our priorities. I think especially it's important to just kind of serve as a guiding star to continue et cetera. Obviously, local government, there'll be all kinds of different things that, you know, could be distractions or even things that are good to do. But we can spend all of our time, effort and limited resources chasing after certain things, but we need to decide are they are they moving us towards the goal collectively? And you all as a body set the vision, but then we've got staff, citizens, community groups and all these different different groups spread out actually carried forward a lot of missions. So again, using this to look back to and make sure all those collective actions every single day, thousands of decisions, are they moving us towards where where we want to be? And then accountability to make sure that that we are making progress or making great decisions to get us where we've said we want to go. The structure of the strategic plan, so it starts at the top with a very, very high level and then focuses in on more narrow, more specific. So starting with the vision, that's the aspirational statement of what we'd like to see for Palatine County in the future. In the future, you know, that that's a little open ended term for the measurables, we're just looking at this term. So we'll say for the next four years here, the goals we want to hit, some of these things we'll want to see maintained forever. For example, rural heritage, that's something we would want to maintain and continue in perpetuity. Some of these things, although we'll want to make progress in forty years, will take longer. So again, the vision is is both tomorrow and very, very far off at the same time. Then our mission, so kind of what is the goal driving Palatine County as a local government? Then establishing some core values, so just things that are non negotiable and are inherently important to who we are and what it means to be Palatine. And then getting into the more specific, setting specific goals and then reach those goals, what are the objectives? And for those actual measurables, so a lot of these are nice terms, but are we actually meeting? How how are we making progress or not making progress, putting in actual measurables we can use? It's a little bit about the update process, so kicking off the day with workshop and then this will be ongoing until you all feel you have a version that's ready to adopt. So expect we'll have another, you know, a couple workshops or so or discuss in a regular meeting and eventually you would take that adopted as your official document. Following this, we will work with our staff leadership team, our partner heads and other employees, so circle it around them and get input. We've got some of that already, but we'll continue to work with them on their expertise in the organization, the county, what they see is important, what's what they think we should be measuring and what are struggles. Seeking public input, that will be a continuous process. I would imagine that when we do adopt this, we'll hold a public hearing, that's that's very formal. We're we're open to public input continuously throughout this process, whether it's speaking in public hearing, writing a letter, emailing, one on one conversations, whatever. We would certainly appreciate the public giving us input on what ultimately is their issue for the county. So we have a plan that was adopted further than twenty twenty work, it had been quite some time since the county had a strategic plan, so it was essentially a full reset. So we worked for most of twenty twenty, I believe in early twenty twenty one, we adopted it, so to why update that? One, just as we are now, that one, it's it's sunset for its measurables for the end of last year, so that has all run out. We don't have goals extended from that. Some of the goals and measurables have been achieved, check the box, so they're not really applicable anymore. Certainly we have new boards, you all have a new a new vision, you want to put your stamp on it, make sure we're working to what you use the priorities. And this one started in January twenty twenty, you know, a whole lot has changed about the world, country and us since then, so naturally some things probably need updating. And then one thing we've just found as we work with this that's lacking a little bit is we really need to have a better appendix of the methodology for how we calculate those measurables. So when we go through the twenty twenty three, I'll point out some there that some of them are obvious, but some of them, it could be subjective depending on who pulls the data or who collects the information. Or some of it's complicated calculations and staff changes, you know, we found some of the measures, we're not sure how they calculate that. So we want to have a good appendix, so we know every single year is apples to apples, we're right counted this statistic this way, somebody else counted this way. So again, that will help with accountability as well. So that's it on on that. Any questions on just kind of the process and the one oh one?
Mr. Chair, if I could.
What is, Powers?
What's the review schedule? How frequently should we expect to give a report card, some accountability to knowledge to support to citizens?
Yeah, a great question. So and that was one thing, unfortunately, we we adopted this before, really the goal was to use it in a lot of our decision making and kind of look at it annually. It just didn't happen. We've been updating it in the background, but it's really just sitting on the shelf, unfortunately. So I would see us one at a minimum doing kind of annual state of the county where we present here, here's where we are on all of our measurables. At the same time, looking, does the plan still meet our needs? You know, maybe each year there might be a goal you want to achieve or add to the ones that's come up. So I think doing that review annually would be a good idea. But really, I think seeing us use it, you know, in nearly every decision we make, whether it's your view of the budget or whether it's approving a conditional use permit or rezoning or staffing decision or really anything. It should somehow tie to strategic plans, so I think we can show in a decision how it does meet or does not meet and match up with a bunch of these goals. And if it doesn't, it doesn't necessarily mean we don't do it, but we should certainly be asking ourselves, you know, why are we doing this if it's not at all connected to our strategic plan?
Mr. Chair, I would, if we do review annually, then course correction is is. It probably is is something we should do more frequently, not a not a deep dive, but some sense from you. Here here's a quarter review, here's what we've done, here's what we have done, here's some things may might need to be recalibrated. See seem fluid as you pointed out, things change constantly, so I would I would suggest we do it more than these.
Yeah, I agree. And we'll have to look at if, because mainly the main thing that would be changing throughout the year would be our progress on the measurables. Some of those are easy, we can pull on some of them, it's already reported, we're doing anyways, it would be very easy to update monthly, quarterly, every six months. But some of them take a bit more to calculate all the data and some of it's reporting, it's only done on either a calendar year or fiscal year basis. So we could certainly do that, but we'll just have to see, some of them may lag where if we do a mid year update, some of the information just might not be there, but some of it wouldn't be, so.
At least mid year, not quarterly, at least at least mid year, so we can do course correction if we need to make have some chance of correcting if we're off a few degrees on the compass heading to where we're going.
Well, there's nothing, I know they're they're measurable, looking at the numbers, Peter said it's great that they're measurable, but they're reachable.
And that's, yeah, and that's that's something as we look through them, it's a good point that some of them we want to have, that they that they are ideally attainable. And some of them may be so important, so example for broad day, you know, I think we wouldn't be satisfied with anything less than a hundred percent. And I believe that's what's in the prior plan. Now knowing the timing of some of the programs and grants and things, when we did the prior plan, we knew that by the end of it, it was just not realistic. We hit a hundred percent, we hit ninety five, ninety seven, we didn't hit it, it was so important that we needed to put that target out there. But there's some other ones where we're more more realistic, that we put the number out there, that we want, we think we can realistically get there within these years, so, you know, certainly having a mind.
I could, I think I think stretching ourselves and going for a goal that at first blush might look to be unachievable. We if we set our goals too too easily achievable, then they're really not a goal. So I I recognize that you can do things that they become dissentive because they're so outlandish. Goals and objectives that cause force us to stretch a bit, I think are good.
And we'll certainly.
So somewhere in between, get that balance.
Yeah, as we go through them, you know, you all will, you know, we'll be talking about each one and setting, what are those? So we can talk about, you know, what's what's reachable, what's a reach goal and setting, which is you all see with that.
Each department head, head, head by you, they bring them to you or do you pretty much suggest it?
They win, we when we did it originally in twenty twenty, department heads were all all very involved in that. So it was, let's say, a iterative process where everybody's kind of throwing feedback and we're working together on it. Now that that plan has been adopted and set, not as much regular feedback on it, more just updating them. But I have recently sent a request out to our leadership team asking for their ideas, and so it's gotten me to make some suggestions for new roles. So after this workshop, I'll be following back up with all the staff to, it starts on the shelves.
So we're good for twice a year. Is that consensus today? I think Steve should get a state of the county address every year.
Question, Brett, before twenty twenty, when was the last strategic plan brought through?
I don't I don't recall, I know, I recall us doing some some strategic retreats and such maybe in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. But it didn't, my recollection results of that were not as as measurable. I think it was more inspirational core value vision, things like that. But one thing that was important for twenty twenty was to take those ideas that sound great and how do we really bring them down to earth and see whether we're looking properly to say. I'd have to check and see, I can't recall the ages of those.
What do we need to get done today?
So for the. Yeah, so first, I thought we can probably run through them in about ten minutes, look at where we've left the prior plans. Again, we never really pulled it off the shelf publicly to kind of just show you where we end the year on all of those goals, measurables, and that will give you some ideas too. Some of those we want to carry forward, some of them we may not. And then I'll pull up the draft we have and start to review some of that, to see where we feel we need to do some work and where we feel good about it. So this is the beginning of the measurables in the prior plan. One, getting to the goal of maintaining the rural character, one measurable we had, focus a little bit more. Was was what percent of our growth is happening outside of our growth areas? And wanting that to be ideally less than half our growth taking place outside of our three core growth areas per the comprehensive plan, which are the area around seven eleven to eighty eight. Route sixty east and then village area, so wanting to see more of our new development happening in those areas where we have utilities, more room and structure. And again, existing patterns of development, so it's not necessarily impacting our our natural farm land trees, rural areas. So you can see there, we have made some steady progress over the years of concentrating more of the growth within our growth areas. Land and conservation programs, this would be how much land is in either land use, conservation easements for AFD districts. And that's been holding kind of steady, gone down a little bit. Will be interesting to see once we update it with the work that's been done over the past year, so to really expand the AFD program, that should help. We have eight twenty zoning, currently there is this, there are no parcels on day twenties, this will be a larger lot district than the eight ten. And there was some interest in seeing some properties get zoned to that, but it's not going to happen on its own. We don't have any kind of program or incentive, unlike AFDs, we haven't done any education or awareness, so no surprise that would change or no surprise that hasn't changed. Route sixty median, one thing we've heard is that having a median and you hear it again, don't don't trust your field Palatine, don't turn us into low median. So having that median, this landscape, you're having trees rather than just, you know, roads pushed together. So preserving that is important, a lot of it's just bare grass. So we thought we would start measuring how much of it is actually landscape, trees or bushes or flowers, you know, to have a nice aesthetic. No change on it yet, but we did in last year's budget, put in some funding to do plantings and things in the median. Want to make sure we did right, so we've been working with the DOD, an engineer, to make sure that we have plans for the right type of plants and things. It will be low maintenance, sustainable. Our goal would be to maybe partner with some nonprofits or some businesses to have, you know, the business is a problem in a certain intersection, go fifty fifty or whatever with us and sponsor it. Maybe to get a sign that says landscaping provided by, so that one, no progress here on this, but we have put some funding and programs in place that will hopefully make some progress. Also, dark sky lighting, so a lot of people not aware, Palatine is one of the first places to adopt dark sky lighting ordinance. So we require any new development, whether it's residential or commercial, to have lighting that directs it down, not up into the sky to create more light pollution. And and that will help us have night skies where you can see stars out here at night. So we are looking at, again, any new development requires that, but there's a lot of existing development, it's not meeting the standard, it's causing light pollution. So we went out to the survey of how many parcels up in that six, we have old lighting, it doesn't mean that. And then tracking massive hivers problems to redevelop and have to put in new lighting, or similarly, we do a grant program where we share some funding with businesses, we'll update their lighting. So again, no progress on that, the numbers held steady, but we put some funding out there to potentially change that. Your land use map, that was a goal that was achieved, it would be last comp plan update, but as would be normal with your board, you all will want to take a look at your comp plan after the strategic plan. Make sure the lines with your vision goals and following that, looking at the ordinances to make sure they match your vision and your comp. For outdoor recreation opportunities, some things we're tracking, we have a couple of points of public access on the Changer River, of course. But we actually don't have a single public access point on the Adam Maddox River. We would like to change that and see that, we have not yet, but there are some opportunities there to do that. Public walking trails in state park, so they have a master plan to expand those and we've advocated to the General Assembly Governor to fund that master plan to expand. So we've been successful at some degree to get some expansions there, but so far the trails have not changed. Public walking trail trails for the county, they haven't changed yet because they haven't been built, but we did secure funding to education trail. ADA trail that works, progressing on that, so hopefully that will start construction in the not too distant future. And then we also just kicked off the trails master plan process, so that will really help us map out where to put those trails and things, so more to come on that. And James River, we have some access points, but wanted to see some of those get expanded a little more. And then public equestrian trails, that is a big thing in Palatine, the number of horses and people enjoying those for recreation. So I want to look at opportunities to expand the trails for that. But no change on most of those. Then looking at schools, a number of joint school board workshops, we had a goal, but you know, that you can commit four times a year, it doesn't mean you're actually accomplishing. So then we have another goal of what are the initiatives that actually come out of that, you know, are we just meeting or are we actually coming up with new ideas, new initiatives? And are we actually on them, so tracking that as well. Students have brought in, so this is one we're talking about, we really need to have an appendix of the methodology in the background. Twenty nineteen, you see schools did a, I believe, a survey that went home or went out to parents and they put it in and said where they had their net and came out with seventy eight percent. But that wasn't something that I believe they repeated since, so making sure we have these things in here, they're actually numbers we can control and repeat year after year or every six months to have a consistent number. Looking at waste management, these training centers, that's the discussion, you know, we'll be having you all to continue work on that. Monitoring, monitoring vehicle counts, and no surprise, they they went down a little bit around the pandemic. As you can see, they continue to creep up and we are well above the traffic counts that we're going to be seeing, so. Yeah, maybe some minor efficiencies that can be found in the existing facility, but as we all know, long term, second facilities will be required to. So the waste recycling, making good progress over the years to get towards our goal of quarter of all waste recycled. And fire rescue and emergency management, looking at total volunteers, so we are above our goal there. But more importantly, how many volunteers are active, also above our goal there. And then want to make sure people have opportunities and have the latest training and continuing education. So that following COVID, we get a really good job after things have slowed down there, put out opportunities. Not sure why I did so much last year, I talked to Chief about that, but I know we were just talking with our emergency management coordinator last week about putting out a bunch of courses, workforce staff or something we'd be working on. Tracking the average age of all the fire rescue apparatus, so nothing else changes each year, everything, average will get a year older. We have a goal that the average age of our fleet should be no more than ten years, we're a little above that, we've got some stuff on order that will help get us in the direction there. And then set a goal that our oldest vehicle in the fleet should be no more than at the time, two thousand. So that's a still a goal we still want, we're four years on, so that would be coming in two thousand and five, something like that. But currently, the oldest vehicle or mains other than nineteen ninety. Looking EMS response times, we are below both of our goals there for far away from that. Then looking at staffing levels for both operations and administration fire, so we are at or around both of those except full time staffing administration still below our goal of four full time or part time. But we're above on the part time. And then our structure for our full response, we, you can see, kind of dips up and down, but have made progress in a couple of recent years towards our goal of nine percent response rate.
Do we define structure fire? Yes. I mean, because it could be a shed or it could be a ginormous building, is there any differentiation between it's just a structure that's on fire?
Yeah, they they do define and track that, so we can look at the number of responses and calls, not exactly what that definition, what is the definition, I'm not sure supervisor, not even know or talk to Chief Warren to get an explanation. They certainly do define and track.
It's the it's same response, whether it's a shed or a house or a barn immediately, so we get the same response, which is which would capture your data accurately regardless of what it is.
Redwood wouldn't paint on the side of the fire.
Oh, yeah.
After responding to all units in eight months' time.
Potentially, and also where is that? Takes longer to get to like, for example, pot twenty would settle up because it's takes so long for two companies to get there, three companies to get there. So that that may affect your data as well.
Well, I didn't know if it might be beneficial goal wise to define, you know, what structure, like, okay, structure, let's just say, structure A fires, which includes, you know, houses, yards, whatever. And then you got, you know, structure B, which is, you know, your shed or something like that.
Yeah, that that's that's a great point that, you know, what we're tracking here, especially it's measurable, we need to make sure it's it's useful. And for example, down below, we'll see the processing times, we don't just look at processing times for all calls, we look at party one, party two. So shouldn't break that structure fire out to different parties or categories.
Yeah, I mean, to be fair to those guys, I think that's not a bad idea, because, you know, human nature is, my shed don't fire, they might not hurry as much as like, well, I got a barn full of horses, you know. So it's just, you know, kind of built in, like, what would you do now, dude? Fry a turkey and, you know, burn the garage.
Yeah, yeah, and, you know, just thinking now on what you're saying too, one thing, this is just a aggregate average number across the county, but, you know, each district's different. So there's one that could be averaging well below and one that's way above and they they average in the middle. People that are living in that area that may not be meeting the goal that that's important, so we also might want to look at it kind of on a geographic basis, like, to know, you know, maybe where we need to direct these.
Yeah, that was a point, you know, kind of awareness, you know, Denise's District Five, you can take a moment to get there, then, you know, one.
Yeah, exactly. Don't want to measure stuff just to measure, we want to make sure it is useful.
Chairman, just a question of curiosity, Mr. Powers. If fire was, a call came in from far eastern part of Canada, would we expect Chesterfield to to respond initially since they're closer? Or would they only respond if we asked?
Yeah, so. There's a mutual aid agreements, there's automatic aid agreements as well for for different response areas, so it depends on where the call comes in. It's not always necessarily the closest unit of mutual aid units, closest is based on experience.
So these figures, you might say, too long, but weren't, are we measuring the fact that that citizen's situation responded to, it just wasn't responded to initially by our part of the chief of general? So there was help in fire apparatus on site far quicker.
Right.
Just due to the distance that our folks have traveled. I just don't want, I just don't want to misconstrue the information and say, oh, that they're not doing, getting to the citizens quickly enough, when in fact.
So you'd also like to capture whether those six firefighters within fourteen minutes or Palatine drivers?
The real essence of measurement in terms of whether we're doing right by the citizens is how quickly somebody gets there. They don't care where, if your house out there, so I just don't want to skew the data, for us to look better or worse than we actually, no idea.
And I think all this captured in report, did they get after every fire?
Okay.
I think all this captured.
Yeah, so yeah, we can, we can certainly drill more into that, get more data, but then it might make sense to break some of these out to actually different. Continuing on public safety, some reporting from our sheriff's office, so fortunate with relatively low violent crime crime rate. It has kind of remained steady or gone down a little bit over the years. And then retention staff, this is, you know, essentially unheard of and well unfortunate right now or last year. I mean, their their retention is always great, but last year they have a one hundred percent retention rate, which again, it's actually.
Maybe eleven Palatine.
And then animal adoption rate continues to be very good. Public safety communications, we implemented our Lambo radio project that was complete, similarly, their staff attention. Similarly, their staff attention in nine one dispatch nationwide, there's a huge problem with, you know, some agencies have. Twenty five, thirty, forty percent vacancies. Lots of turnover. Last year, again, our turnover is always quite good, but last year they had ninety seven percent. To get in that industry is also just unheard of. So. Both in our sheriff's office and our nine one dispatch center doing a not good job of that, giving the key, the keys what we have. And then processing times for fire and police, both under our goals. And then we do regular false insurance testing of those calls to make sure they're being handled properly, following all the right protocols to get people. Time assistance and continue to be above our our measures there in national centers. Emergency management, looking at the age to make sure our plans are current. So EOP emergency operations plan will be readout and updating that. Hopefully next week. So that will be refreshed and done. We'll continue to track to make sure it's current. And that what's on the. Continuity of operations plan, the all hazard communication plan typically do regionally to make sure they remain current at all time. Shifting to person, right? Some of the things we tracked previously was the use of the county in school diamond fields. Both of those have increased, but they're below. Rectangular fields, both at hundred percent, which we have our goal of ninety percent. We want good usage. We don't necessarily want them at total capacity. That can be. Tough on the grass, hard to get new groups in there. So that would tell us that we could be looking at either. Efficiencies or adding on additional fields or looking at scheduling, but we don't. Being a hundred percent for too long, we tell us. Looking at what percent of the total parks from red department is operated by teams, by user fees. Have to talk to our director and see. What the twenty twenty three numbers are, certain twenty twenty two, it dropped quite a bit. I don't recall why. But that's been a goal to try and increase that and get about twenty percent. Of the total budget for these. Again, looking at walking trails, we talked about that one, athletic group participants, tournament participants, tracking how many take part in that. Will be interesting to see twenty twenty three there because we've done a lot of work having programming events. Session sales, we had a change in our vendor last year. So reset on that and see where it goes and then adopting. Over every year, there's a rankings, put out ranking the top healthiest localities in the nation and breaking them down by states. This looks at all kinds of things from. Health indicators, crime statistics, education, and kind of compiles it all in what they call the quality of life ranking. As we've said, we want to remain in the top fifteen. Other than twenty twenty two, we consistently remain there. Public utilities, we would like to sell at least fifty percent of the purchased water sold. That's that's one where, you know. Want to sell more than that, but we have so much water, more than users that that much more than that's probably not realistic within the timeframe, but. Do we set something more aspirational or do we set something we think in three or four years we can actually hit? You see, that's kind of fluctuated until we get some major users. It's not going to change that much. Restaurant here or other parts there isn't really going to move the needle that much given vast volume of accounts. Permanent compliance for our wastewater plants. So we want a hundred percent on that, so quite close and do a good job of that. The average age of our root and HVAC system, HVAC systems, tracking those, wanting them to be under twenty five years for root and under fifteen years for HVAC, which we are on both. And then. Addresses with access to broadband, continuing to make slow to steady progress on that and have. Both funded grants as well as grants we're going after this year to try and get that to one hundred percent. Then looking at transportation, this is one where, again, we need to make sure for any measurable, we have a clear understanding of how that's calculated. So back in twenty nineteen, we had said we wanted to track what percent of the roads are functioning at a level of service D or worse. So. Roads are graded on a scale, A, B, C, D, F. Basically, how much ingestion there is, you know, whether it's regular fleet. Free flowing traffic or whether it's gridlock. So D sounds bad, but that's, you know, peak hour. You don't want to overbuild your road. So you don't free flowing every single step of the day or else you have, you know. Six lane highways all through the county, which we don't want. So typically you say. D or better is where you want to be. We were able to calculate that in twenty nineteen. But what's some changes in V dot staff and planning staff, we've had a hard time replicating or figuring out where we came up with that figure with. So even if we came up with a new one today, it might not be apples to apples. So if we continue to track something like that, we'll have a clear appendix. They'll show exactly how to calculate that. So anybody in time could come and arrive at the same number. Adopted master thoroughfare plan. I would say that that's checked at a hundred percent, but when we did our last complaint. We essentially just tweaked and readopted our prior major thoroughfare plan for transportation routes. But kind of acknowledged that we need to look at that not as part of a whole complaint update, but take that chapter out separately and just spend some time working on that. So I'd say it's a hundred percent, but really that's not a finished effort. That's something we want to look at and work on at some point. And then the accident rate, also one that we previously worked with V dot, got an accident rate and have had a hard time getting that data. Something that would probably. We have a very good voter participation here in the county. Very involved constituencies of tracking that. Depending on the election, whether it's local, state, federal, and some of that's out of our control. Obviously, presidential election brings in more than some others. So it fluctuates on its own. Good job year after year regardless of responding to a really high. Participate in public.
Hey, right. Yeah. So go back to the accident rate. I mean, aren't those statistics we can get? Because I know the sheriff's office got accidents statistics for thirteen sixty. The traffic studies and that's something we could ask them to call for. Rather than waiting on V dot to do it.
Yeah, so.
Well, that's it. Because when they pull them by, you know, the sheriff's office can pull them to state too.
Yeah, the the issue department we had missing here. So we can get that data and know how many accidents happened. But to get the rate, we need to know the total vehicle miles traveled. So, you know. If there's a hundred accidents in a year and people drive a million miles. Or there's under that since next year people drive two million miles and that rate, you know, was cut in half, even though it was the same number. And that's the denominator we haven't been able to get. Is the total vehicle miles traveled in a year by one Palatan. So we can put on here the accident rating. But you would see some natural growth as populations grow, as traffic grows, if it will slowly go up, what is the rate of accidents going to be down? So that's where we need to get the total vehicle miles traveled. We got to just. For whatever reason, we we did not. But that's something where hopefully with the transportation position that we'll have, they can be regularly tracking this stuff and giving us updates in real time and then. Kind of diving into it and seeing where those hotspots are for accidents.
As as well as. Measurement of injury totality.
Yeah, and that's that's a good point because, you know, there's, this would treat virtually every accident or futile accident. It's the same, whether, you know, it's off road, just, you know. Thunderbender or whether it's a fatality. See how we could also break that out and look at the severity.
Can I make a comment? But I want to remember that we're still in Robert's room. You know, this is a work job. As the chairman, we speak. Thank you.
But looking at some of our financials, we had a goal of looking at expanding our financial forecasting to ten years, which we do now. That's. Integral part of our budgeting and regular forecasting. Credit rating double A plus is essentially the best we can get currently. To get more than that, you need to have a much larger commercial base that we don't have yet. But we've talked to our financial advisor about other things we can do to strengthen our credit rating, but it essentially maintains that highest level for a locality of our size. Fund balance, we have. A policy there which we remain well above. Previously, we did not have a revenue stabilization fund. Think of the uncertainty of the pandemic and, you know, what's going to happen with with revenues and money in businesses. Prior board felt like they wanted to put in a revenue stabilization fund, but then as years went on, kind of. Fell out of favor with that. So so it was taken notice. We currently don't have one. That's something we could look at, if we all wish. Then we have policies for our projected debt service to expenditure ratio. So our policy is twelve percent. But we go up to fifteen percent, but if we have a plan to get us back down under twelve percent as quickly as possible. So you can see there. With some projected future borrowing. In a five year term, we would just slightly love that twelve percent. But then if you look at the next one, the ten year, we would be have a plan to get back down below that. And then we also measure it as a percent of our sub value. We remain well below. And then adopt, update it ERP, or that's our county wide financial. Or not just financial, everything permitting, finance, taxes, system, which we have done. Just a couple more here, looking at economic development, retention of our top twenty private employers. So we would like to maintain, retain one hundred percent of all of our top twenty employers. So far, we've only lost one. That was San Air, who was located in Oak Ridge. And this is one where I think you can tie strategic plans and measures to. Our efforts and multi fund. So there, I would say one reason that we did lose them is we had met with them in seventeen, twenty eighteen. But because we had such little staff dedicated to that, we didn't meet with them in twenty nineteen or twenty twenty. When they started to expand and we're getting needed to find a new location. We weren't aware that they were looking, they should pick up the gun to their Realtor. So, you know, find me a new spot. Realtor. Doesn't have necessarily ties to Palatane. So they found a place at Chesterfield. Had we been meeting with them regularly with top twenty four, we should, we should be talking to them every year and not every few months. We would know that, you know, okay, we're starting first, it seems here, we're going to find a new place. Doesn't mean we would have gotten here, but we would have had a chance. We would have known that. So after that, yeah, I just got to tie this to funding, add an additional position, not development. So now we do have more staff to be out there regularly. Meet all our businesses, top employers. So if something like that happens, we won't be called on guard. It's prized. We'll know.
Hey, Mr. Chairman.
Just kidding.
Can I make one comment about that? So I I guess something belongs, there was an issue with the county who like. Charged him sixteen thousand dollar water bill. Can we try to make it a policy rather than send them a letter on a mistake like that to go personally visit the business and have a conversation with them?
Yeah, and and I'm not sure if that's a. You know, necessarily a written policy, but I think that's a good expectation that just as as. How we do business, you know, face to face is better than or phone calls better than a letter. So.
Yeah, kind of tied into the retention of businesses, you know, their personal touch, you just can't beat it.
Very completely.
Thank you.
On the point rates, we we historically have a very good lower employment rate in the county and remain below our goals there. Have goals for total value of business expansion of existing businesses that are growing. That's there. Likewise, numbers on value of new construction typically neither exceed that. And then this is, this is a big one, the commercial and residential real estate tax split. So it's heavily skewed and biased towards residential. Taxpayers. So when we need something like a new school or fire trial or a position. Ninety three percent of that roughly is on the residential homeowner, seven percent on the business. So wanting to move that in a better direction. So that will be, that's one where figuring out what is a realistic attainable goal, but also far enough a stretch, that's what you're supposed to get there. So that's looking at just real estate. Then when you look at all revenues, not just real estate, but. Fees, licenses, machinery, tools, business property, all of that, it's a little better. Fourteen percent commercial, eighty six percent residential. Still, we can look at what we want those to be. Business expansions, we had said that we would like to see at least one current business announcing expansion every quarter. We've done quite above that and have said that we want to have two new business announcements per year and typically done quite a bit. Thanks. One more here. And then looking staffing, we do an annual survey, asking a number of questions, including whether employees are proud to be part of Palatane staff or not. So. I would just send that out. So soon should have twenty twenty three numbers for you. Could have done okay there. We think to be a little bit higher, but not bad. Compensation, what percent of staff is at the midpoint of their pay scale? Average years of experience on staff. So if staff changes, we make sure we're not losing too much historical knowledge or experience and have a good depth on our bench. Looking at compression factor as as people come and go and hire new people, pay scales change, wanting to make sure that's around ninety percent. Employee health, this is how many employees have had a general wellness visit within the past twelve months. So that has steadily been increasing and currently exceeds our goal. Voluntary turnover. Some some change in turnover is is healthy. So we don't have that being zero. We do have it being five percent. So we've been. Historically a bit higher and it's been trending down in the right way. So. And then community involvement, this is one that we, I would love to see us continue to embrace and do something with. We put it on here, but haven't really done anything with it. We'd like to get staff involved in community projects. Whether that's us preparing something and doing it, or whether it's just giving people, you know, hours they could use like vacation time to go out and volunteer with a nonprofit or something like that. So we'd like to see our our staff get involved in certain projects. Plenty of them do on their own, but more officially the county having a role in that. And then lastly, the average number of applications for a job post. Done a good job of increasing that and hitting our goal.
That's really good.
Yeah, we've been, and the the market was not just tough, the market was tough for everybody for a while there, but some of the positions we've been advertising for recently. We've seen the type of patients we saw pre pandemic, which has been really good. Last piece, this this is talking about having kind of a matrix to show you how to calculate them. This is all we have, the old plan, which points you. Where's we get some of these measurables, but not necessarily how they're counted and a bunch of. As time goes on, can become a mystery of where we come up with that number. It's not between the winner or the loser. So that is, I just review the measures where we left them off in twenty twenty three. Any questions on any of those before we start looking at the draft or document?
We get a three minute recess.
So then, I think as I mentioned at the beginning. Circulated a working draft that y'all have given some preliminary comments to. So we'll just go through this and kind of talk through what we've got so far and any any feedback y'all might want to see change or questions. We'll take this, get with our staff as well and get their feedback on it. Like feedback from the public and then follow back up. Soon the next workshop with updated versions draft. Get it to where you all like it. So the overview, probably not too much to say there, just kind of talking about the process. What what makes up the plan? With the end goal of those measurable, measurables being twenty twenty eight and twenty twenty seven. Then so then the means of the plan being starting with the vision, which is that we are a thriving and diverse community, rewarding our citizens a way of life guided by a longstanding rural heritage. Where all are given opportunity to prosper economically, have access to best class schools and are assured of their personal safety. Any, any additional comments or anything on the vision?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Notty, go ahead.
Nothing wrong with it. I'm not saying there's anything wrong with it. I'm just kind of curious. It kind of comes to the conclusion that this is the best fit for our vision.
Yeah, and that's, I'd say it's a, it's a different process where it's it's everybody collectively and ultimately you all, it's the board supervisors, you adopted. So it has to be what. What you want. It's kind of really everybody bringing in their input and trying to come up with something that feels collectively represents what we want to be. But ultimately, you all.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, the answer to your question specifically. I I having having a little more time, so my colleagues. I, I having, having a little more time, so my colleagues, I, I took upon myself to look at that. What you see here, just as a, as a, as a starting point. Wanted to departure, certainly not, not no pride of ownership. Just wanted to have something that we could start from, completely clear piece of paper. To answer your question.
And that's why we're having this meeting. If there's any changes, it may be, we did change.
And, and we, again, having been part of the last process, there was lots of changes. What we ended up adopting was not what we started with or natural or not at all wrong to have feedback in weeks, whether it's night or whether as we go through meetings or once you go home and think about it, your constituents or our staff, these all evolve.
Mr. Chairman, if you, if you go back and look at the twenty twenty-one vision mission statements. I think things have changed enough, not only for the complexion of court, just changed camp. That was perfectly fine. I know Mr. Monk has, has a lot of developing that, so I'm not being critical of what you did. But I think things have changed enough that it warranted the change of focus. I also would say that in the old plan, core values were just listed. There was no definition of that in terms of, and everybody has a little different definition of what those terms meant. So I went ahead and said, well, let's, let's pick the things at the time I thought were vital as core values and give definitions.
Then draft mission statement saying that for all facets of kind of government to work in unison and common purpose, delivering services, accountability, commitment to protection of each citizen's liberties and providing opportunity for all to thrive. Establishing some core values of being integrity, transparency, accountability, responsive and compassionate. Finding integrity is to demonstrate uncompromising parents' strong moral ethical principles, being truthful, earnest and execution of our duty. Transparency to appropriately share information necessary to provide full explanation for all policy expenditure decisions. Accountable meaning to accept responsibility for all our actions and decisions with commitment to offer a rationale for taking them. Responsive to reply quickly to citizens' inquiries and concerns. And compassionate to be aware of the challenges faced by our constituents, sympathetic to their concerns and commitment to doing all possible to redress them fairly. Just that one we're coming out, have unresponsive to reply quickly to citizens' inquiries and concerns. I think we did reply quickly without necessarily giving them a good, full reply. So we both want to be timely, but also make sure we researched, given them the correct information, not just, you know, check the box instead of we replied through email within ten minutes. So maybe some, I think an additional word there, just kind of thinking aloud, reply quickly and effectively or something there that's not just the speed, but it's also the quality of their reply.
Precisely. That's a good.
Any on either the mission statement above or these core values, any thoughts? Then so again, those are very, very high level. Then we start to drill down more into more specific. We have some drafts, teaching goals and objectives. So one overarching goal would be to balance commercial and residential growth with rural heritage. And I would say just following that was I might just strike commercial and residential, just balance all growth, whether it's, whether it's industrial or office or whatever. I think all growth regardless of one valid balance with our rural heritage. Then some objectives under that, adopt a planned balance of commercial and residential growth. Adopt and implement mixed-use land use principles. Adopt zoning ordinances, expanding workforce housing inventory. Adopt policies and programs enhancing Powhatan's rural heritage and adopt a strategic plan for expansion of water and sewer structure. Then under those are the goals and strategies, incorporate economic development, long-range strategic plan into the comprehensive plan. Provide residential density and building types allowed by rate and comprehensive plan, future land use map. Plan for and develop infrastructure projects for the commercial development. Incorporate village planning and development and mixed-use zoning in the comprehensive plan. Provide residential housing types and allow densities that are enabled lower cost construction. Preserve open spaces, if, if the conservancy ordinance adoption. So any under, under that heading of balancing growth with rural heritage, any thoughts, changes, additions?
So when we say improve, implement, revise residential density and building types allowed by type. So like the fifty-foot driveways of by right. But we can change that. By right types as well, because, because I, I wouldn't necessarily consider the driveway issue of building by, by right. Wouldn't that be a land use allowed by right? So maybe that needs to be reverted a little bit?
Yeah, yeah, I think we wouldn't, the, the end goal wouldn't just be easy to just allow people to build whatever by right. But it might be quality, well-managed, well-planned and all that. So I think somehow adding that.
I was gonna say, Mr. Chairman. What did merit?
We do also have ordinances that allow for and require orderly, well-planned development. So it's not just hodgepodge on plan. I think something going to not just the title, but also the quality of it. We can think some language here. Then goal two, excellent public services. First heading, education with objectives of effectively prepare students for life, contribution citizenship. Support the twenty twenty-four, twenty thirty PCPS strategic plan. Expand county-wide broadband services, upgrade fully maintained school facilities. Strategies for achieving those, maintain good working relationship with the school board, county chair, vice chair, board supervisor, Powhatan County School Board, staff admin meeting. Support career technical education, CTE, I S C, capital improvement program. Fund matching grants to expand broadband services countywide and establish facilities for management account.
Mr. Chairman.
So two questions, Brett. So strategic goals. And going back to Robert's point. Are these yearly goals? I mean, are they ten-year goals? Because when I look at expand county-wide broadband service, to me, that would be complete. You know, not expanded, but complete what we're already working on, right?
Yeah, yeah. So for then, but under these, then we'll come up with, once, once we know kind of which ones, you know, do we do. Some measurables, that's, that would be down every year. We're looking at how we're making progress towards.
Mr. Chairman. An answer to, to Mr. Keats. We're, we're looking at a four-year time horizon. Is that, is that correct?
So the, we would be tracking the measurables for, for four years. But some of them would, yeah, exactly. Yeah, so the goal could be something that could take fifty years. So you could have a goal that we want to achieve X and you, you know, that's going to be a twenty-year goal. But at least for the next four years, we'll measure how much we're getting there. Some of these goals, we will achieve in the next four years.
So what it is, is to put a timeframe on this. Measurable within what period of time? Is that what I hear you saying?
Yeah, that, I guess if, if it's within the next four years, that's easy. We can track that, we can check that. If you want to, if it's something that's going to be further out and you want to know that you're making progress towards it, but you know it's not going to be done in four years.
Right.
That's where we could have a certain percentage maybe that along by the time it corrected, you know, we want to finish it, but by the end of twenty twenty-seven, we want to be at least fifty percent along the way of getting there on this. So we could. As we look at some of these and actually specifics, rather than just kind of talking conceptual, I think it'll make sense how we structure them. It'll, it'll be different.
Keep in mind a new ordinance, which is strategic plan in forty years.
So, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Would it be who of us, Brett, to maybe break these down into short-term strategic goals and objectives and then long-term goals, strategic and objectives?
Yeah.
Short-term, because you're right, we only can control the next four years. So if we had maybe define the short-term strategic goals and objectives, you know, these are what we want to do in the next four years. Of course, you got your long terms, which, you know, the other four can be entered in.
Yeah, I, I would think that's a, a great idea. The previous plan, we just treated them all, say, I mean, not necessarily able, same, we didn't, we didn't distinguish that between what's the short term and the long term. That, that would make sense.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is, is the last board did the new strategic plan in twenty twenty. So they've had two years in that they were going to be. So they were projecting future, not just their time as being a water supply. So it has to be updated and whatever every four years, correct?
Yeah, we would, yeah, like every time a new board come in, it would be one update that extended. And you, it's not to say that you couldn't have your goals and measures go further, but you know, we, we can all control for sure that time here. So that's why we've had a look into those, those four years.
So basically, it's our goals and values. And our strategic goals.
Our, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, it's really to hold ourselves accountable in the order we're doing.
That's why, Mr. Chairman, that's why I like breaking it into short and long terms. The short term, it needs to go.
More short.
We can't count on you, King.
Mr. Chairman. Go ahead.
No, I said, thank you.
Oh, thank you.
I think the benefit of reviewing these, not just to evaluate where we're at with these measurable goals, also gets us the ability to understand the sort of living, breathing, dying.
Natural change add to.
And next, looking at waste management. Objectives include support land economic development, commercial residential. Water wastewater strategic plan, master plan. C I P placement of water service extension supporting twenty twenty-four revised comp plan. C I P placement super treatment service extension supporting twenty twenty-four comp plan. Anything under. I should admit that says waste management, I think that would be a waste management as well as some public water. So we could just call it public facilities or something. But any, anything under the arena of waste management, public water, public sewer?
It's my understanding that we are purchasing water on Chesterfield and paying for it. And doing a lot of, basically, we're not using all the water that we are buying. So how would we achieve a situation where I think the, the largest part of it was down the corridor of sixty, correct? And I thought I heard someone say that when it was being put in, it was not put in with a future plan in sight. So how would we correct that?
Yeah, so, so essentially to use more of the water that we're, we're paying for.
Yeah, and finish the sixty corridor that has not been completed.
Yeah, so a, a number of different things. And that's part of the updated water wastewater master plan. I, I would expect would give us some more strategies and things on that. But I mean, one, just simply having more users of the water, that, that's sounds easy, but yeah, together, but that would do it. There's also things, one thing we've looked at in C I P, we sell water. So if somebody needs to fill tanker pools or construction, stuff like that, run out or run out of meter and then you draw from a hydrant to fill a tank. We think we might be able to get more water purchase like that if we had an actual fill station. So something that try and pull up fills those type of those, those type of things where we can sell more water to people like that. There's also some things like looping. So instead of flushing it, we can recirculate it. And there's a number of other, other things that we can do to reduce the amount that we're flushing. Particularly so water wastewater plan will be important to that, but there are strategies.
I'd like to see that we keep that in mind, yes, see what we can.
Mr. Chairman. You talk about the looping. Do we have a minimum amount that we have to take from Chester?
I'm sure in the moment, anytime, I'm sure there's a certain amount to, to keep it functioning properly, but I don't.
There is no minimum. There's a maximum, so just over a hundred thousand gallons a day. Currently, we're using somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred and forty to a hundred and sixty thousand gallons a day. So nowhere near that cap, but there is a minimum. So by looping, there'd be no penalty from the, the fire contract we have, right? And, and the, the purpose of looping is to just move water through the system, stagger that water is the area of the system.
That's why we flush it.
Mr. Chairman, good. The intention to, Mr. Morse, that's a point. It's my understanding that the, some of the public utilities on sixty were purposely stopped at a particular point. The thought be that board, we don't, we really are not in favor of development going beyond or occurring in that area of gap. I assume that those gaps would be addressed in this revised updated plan.
Sure. Yeah.
Now, I don't, I don't recall seeing the C I P major investments in, in that area.
No, and that would be, that, that's one where the comp plan will feed off the wastewater master plan, which also feed off the comp plan. So the wastewater master plan, it's, it's probably not going to envision expanding utility outside of our planned growth areas. That's where the comp plan really, if everyone is in the first step, would be the comp plan acknowledging that there's no utilities here, but we should see growth in this area. And then utilities follow. So I'd say that's probably utility planning. Most of that was done before my time, but I've been involved in comp planning. And it's, it's kind of stopped that utilities. We have utilities here or not because of the experience.
I think in this, one of the measurable goals would be to evaluate the needs of the comp plan to evaluate if we have the right amount of water on the right places based on, for example, seven, eleven, twenty-eight area of this plan for not development, not area. We've prepared for that. Or we have to make it to a new plan somewhere. Things like that.
Mr. Chairman, to, to that point, I I'm worrying more about the soils of the county and the ability for soil to support septic systems in terms of lot size, partial size. And let's agree, in this gross young nation, you can't go much under two acres or something because of, because of soil condition in certain parts of the county, very restricted parts. So the whole issue of residential any sort of residential growth is really tied to public, public water. And as, as the county develops on a commercial side, those, those commercial flows are going to be for customers. We have, I, in my view, has to give serious consideration to what we're doing in terms of our infrastructure. That will dictate what we're able or not able to do for the next. That will dictate what we're able or not able to do for the next, we're seeing the future. Well, I'm anxious, I'm anxious to see that. Has has that has that contract for the updated in that yet, or are we still negotiating?
We have a virtual meeting with the the engineers this week, and uh on your agenda for Monday night. Is I am going to move some project savings to the utilities master planning fund to allow us to to execute that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
So what do you think?
So when we flush, so is the water we flush drinkable?
Yes.
So rather than flush it, why can't we put it in the water tower here in the village and people could use that water? To drink rather than us flushing down the toilet.
The tower in the village is non-drinkable water.
Right, but if you drain that and put drinkable water in it.
Flush it out. And that tower is connected, uh, that would be the optimal water system, so the county isn't supporting drinking water in the village here.
We we have had some discussion with them on and off over the years about mutual their interest in in having access to um our tower and us having interest in having access to their their potable water. Sure, it kind of many years ago, we don't think it really pan out. Have we had any recent discussions with them ago?
We we have reached out several times about the tower and the water system. One of the issues in the village area is pressure. Uh, pressure is a struggle within the businesses that are connected to the system. That tower would certainly solve a pressure issue. Uh, and so it could be very, very much in highlands uh uh benefit to have a negotiation with the county about that. Um, but so far after several attempts, uh, no success on that front yet.
So. Who supplies all the drinking water in the village?
To Scott.
Sure, so so the ten the ten towers requires pressure for school.
And uh under fire EMS equipped and staff responsive to a growing diverse population. Similar to public safety, um, just slightly different wording, so I'd suggest maybe match that wording to be the same.
Mr. Chair, I could, um, just in my my effort to do this, I quickly realized I was way over my speed in in terms of these areas really. Senior senior staff and department head. So I stopped. And so what you see now is just exactly what was in twenty twenty. It bears additional scrutiny, but my colleagues and my staff will pursue, you know, those.
I would suggest maybe help continue to to flush this out, maybe take the um the twenty twenty one plan. Just any goals that you want to see continued into this, uh, whether we just take them for paid or whether we take them to we come, you know, maybe go through, highlight it and let us know, okay, these. Five goals or these twenty goals we disappoint us, we want to continue these, maybe we tweak them a little bit, but at the core, we want to continue working on that thing, then we can plug all those in here.
Mr. Chair, I I would encourage, if you haven't had opportunity to do this, I think, uh, this is more set, if you have it. Sit down and read a hundred and sixty semi-page conference plan. I think it does a much better job, much better job spelling out these these goals and objectives. Much more understandable for me to read. And so I I would encourage everybody to start marking in terms of things that you think need to be, need to be changed. It's a good document, it really is. It it does need some tweaking.
Mr. Chair. Just a suggestion, I mean, we've got three categories here, three, four, and five, that kind of all fall into the same thing, public safety. And that would be public safety slash communications plus disaster prep, that's part of public safety. Maybe we could just have one, you know, public safety, and then those are self-ones. Can shrink that a little, make my brain a little. This is just.
Public safety, communications, disaster preparation, those are all the. That.
Mr. Chair, um. Mr. Chair, I is it your attention in these public service, in these public areas, these these places that we have here, of having departments come back to us with their input as to. I I know it's our 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 strategic plan, but I I need I need input from the department.
So yeah, we uh we'll we'll get with them um and see which goals they feel like should be brought forward, and some of them have suggested brand-new goals that weren't even in the old plan, that they think should be. Uh, new objectives, new goals, and ways to measure them. So uh so the next time we look at this, um, we'll we'll load those in there. And have more fleshed out.
We set a timeframe, uh, two weeks, three weeks, some timeframe that we could expect that back from departments and your your staff.
Well, we need to look at our our schedule, um, we're about to start budget review as well, and so with all those workshops, you know, if there's a workshop where it makes sense to add this on, or if we need to have separate workshops, so we'll. Uh, after this meeting, we'll go back with our schedule and see where we best bring this back for you. Um, yeah, we think, um. You know, probably more I'll send something out to departments and ask them to have something back, yeah, probably two weeks. Week to review it, week to work with their staff.
Because as you pointed out, this will drive any consideration for the comp plan, the revision drives that. And ultimately, the 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 budget we're going to be contemplating should should reflect strategic plan. So it's not a precursor, it's in the critical path of this.
Uh, I'm going to piggyback on Mr. Power's here. I think uh we look at our strategic plan, we look at the comp plan, we look at the budget, I think. It should improve us all to make sure that we're all collaborating effectively, because it should flow well. When I say flow well, we. Ten-year budget topic, uh. A potential fire station number six. Uh, if we're if we're looking at a strategic plan for measurable goals that that should feed into. And whether we need it or not, uh, in that, so. So all that, all that information should flow well.
Parks and Brag, so watch and local placeholder, um, certainly. Focus on that, ensuring health and welfare. Dressing nonprofits. High-quality infrastructure and planning responsive to the nonprofit growth. Goals for transportation. And then goal three of the efficient effective storage finances. Adopting accepted public sector financial standards and policies, enhance well-being and efficient allocation of resources, improve the overall financial position efficiency. Adopt and or update all public sector financial. Budget CIP supporting strategic plan, maintain sound financial position among Virginia Peters, buy quality, timely services on cost-effective basis. Influencing policies and practices, creating a business-friendly environment, develop a five-year development plan. As part of the development plan, develop patently inventory properties by the county. Fully support and enhance the role of the EDA, enhance commercial development potential by contribution to the conference planning process. Build practices in our staff, business outreach and recruitment. And then under uh excellent kind of workforce, goal five, track and retain excellent workforce, survey and maintain high-level employee satisfaction. Develop and implement professional development plan, maintain positive work environment, develop merit-based recognition and work program. And adopt annual board supervisor staff retreat, set firm goals, build relationships. That is the end of the draft. Say anything? Other uh comment, thoughts, feedback, if not, I think we.
I would, I would want to emphasize that the annual retreat as a concept is something I think we should, we should really consider slots to. Especially as we've been, we've been norming and forming on the field prior to the big tour, we can all, all have some some uh. Discussion to update the rules. But I think to get together the staff in in a in a more relaxed setting, to get to know each other much better, share some. Personal as well as professional attributes of our lives with each other, you know, talk about some of these. Once these get solidified, to sit down and talk to them in a in a day. Overnight, next day, half-day, type of off-campus retreat. I'm not sure the budget will be allowed, but I would encourage to these people to thoughts. That we do. Something that I think we should, we should do as an annual activity. Very good. Ready, bud?
Well, uh, we'll get the staff and um uh if working on this, and again, we'll look at our coming schedule and figure out when to regroup on this.
Mr. Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I I hate to push on this, but I hate to leave this meeting without something written down in my calendar, that if you're filling up, so are ours. So is there any possibility we could get? At least.
I think the dates get a lot of meetings come up, budget meetings and stuff, we might be included in some of those meetings.
Yeah, typically, we 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 often to make sure we have time on our schedule, we put in all the possible workshops within our budget, we rarely use all of them. Um, so I I will look at that, but I I imagine we can work within the existing structure of workshops, and we already have schedule, so, so, yeah, we'll uh.
We're giving two weeks for your staff to come back with with some. Flushing out some of these and possibly letting us have some visibility to prior to the new workshop. Is that reasonable?
You want else? Good, thank you, Brett, for all that. How good? Brings us to our second public comment period.
If I may.
Go ahead, sir.
My name is Martin Martin Daras, my name. Took in power time company for twenty-seven years on Soski role. That's a district boy. Uh, twenty-five years in corporate world primarily in business, leading business planning and analysis. Spent quite a bit of time last year with Brett and Shaw, and more recently with Robert and Denise also talking about. To lead plans, performance measures, and so on and so forth. This was the first time I've heard Brett go through this detail, very encouraging, but I have some comments. I like the fact that there were some mix of leading and landing indicators that Brett shared over here. One of the things that might be useful to have is an external benchmark. Benchmarks against counties with terminal characteristics as power tank. That would tell us not only how are we doing internally through internal measures, but how do we compare with the outside world? Now, gathering those benchmarks is probably going to be difficult. Other companies may not use the same definitions and so on, but it could be useful to compare ourselves to the outside world. It's a very common thing that is done in the corporate world where you compare yourself to the outside world. So that's one recommendation I would make. Another one I would make is. The county is providing a service to its citizens. How do the citizens see the county's service? What's the customer satisfaction? Could we do some kind of a survey that would indicate that we are improving on our customer service? In a future meeting, I would love to see how the county administration would cascade these measures through the organization. What Brett has shown is kind of at the top of the house, and we've talked about, yes, the leadership team is going to bind and so on. What what exactly is the process of cascading that from the top of the house through the organization, through all the different levels in the organization? But not everyone might agree with this, there may be some pushback, but it's good to understand where we stand. So for the time being, those are just my comments, but I really appreciate Brett taking the time, and this was my first time going through this in detail. There is a technique, I think Kenny mentioned, about performance measures. There's something called SMART technique, S M A R T, you're familiar with that. S for specific. M for measurable. A for achievable, R for relevant, all those measures relevant to the objective. And T for time bound. I think there was some discussion about having a time boundaries and so on. So if we can follow those SMART principles as much as possible, it's definitely worth it. But thank you, Brett, I really appreciate that.
Thank you, sir. Public comment. Those public comment period, uh, county attorney back here, county administrator comments?
Something else.
Board comments.
Chair, um, to your point, uh, thank you for. Could be more work to. Really see how, once we come to consensus as a board and have the senior staff. To see how that cascades and filters down individual employees, buy-in, the buy-in for this needs to be throughout the year. They don't buy in, they'll they'll slow, they'll walk things or ignore things or whatever. The buy-in needs to be from. And so I don't know how you go about doing that, other than the normal course of your meetings and status work that you do with your individual employees, but if. This whole thing needs to cascade down and 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 to see if people are going to embrace it, and if not. If you see a product questioning this, I don't agree with this or don't understand this, we need to know that, so that we can, maybe we need to tweak it. And and that goes for the citizens too, if we get in, but I'm I'm really interested in in the employees, all of your, all of our employees having feeling that they have input to this thing. In terms of workforce uh. Being appreciated and satisfaction of working here, if people aren't franchising these things, they feel valued. And that's why I would encourage that we we find a mechanism to do.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? I have one thing, I would like, we have the man of the week here, like they have, you know, they don't do DMV, I think.
It's going, we're uh we're back. We did over six thousand dollars the first day. In a good way, we'll see whether it's just being new or whether it actually settles out, but it's uh it's been a little overwhelming this week.
Think you go stay busy.
I might be coming back to you, unfortunately. Because if it's, if it stays the way we stayed this week, this will be hard to help out.
Yeah.
It really is, but but it's it's great, we've heard nothing but good things from the citizens, good things popping up online, so.
Same here.
Mr. Chair, Jim, that you're still, you're still not doing the full full contingent of of service, you're you're still phasing that in.
Correct.
Yeah, so you you're overloaded now, you're not doing the whole.
But again, you know, we're brand new, so we're not a hundred percent efficient yet, and you know, that will come with with doing the task. Repetitively, but it's uh, I mean, just the sheer number of people.
How are your folks doing?
They're doing good. They're enjoying it. I mean, you get to the end of the day and everybody takes a deep breath. But they they show them back up the next morning and you tackle it, so, yeah.
That's good.
I heard that's the good thing.